All right, good evening, everyone. This is Rodolfo, Roman Community Outreach Specialist for the roadway improvement projects located along Southwest Eighth Street, from Southwest Seventy-Fourth Court to Southwest Twenty-Seventh Avenue. The public meeting will begin in about three minutes. We will be going live in three minutes, or we'll start the meeting, the hearing, sorry, the public hearing in three minutes. We can take your questions, you can submit it in the question box, what you see on the right-hand side of your control panel. We will be also having an opportunity to allow the public to join in and answer and ask questions to the team here available this evening. We will open up the microphones after the presentation. But in the meantime, you could submit your questions via the question box, or you can also send us an email. If you're having to, Rodolfo dot Roman at DOT dot state dot FL dot US. If you're having any technical difficulties, if you're calling in by any chance and you're having some issues, you can contact this Maria Alsate at the number that you see on your screen, three oh five, five sixty, eighty-two, eighteen, or you can send her an email at Maria at icprgroup dot com for assistance. Once again, we will get started at six PM, in two minutes, we will get started with our presentation. Thank you. All right, thank you, everyone, and welcome to our public hearing for State Road Ninety, Miami Trail, Southwest Eighth Street, from Southwest Seventy-Fourth Court to State Road Nine, Southwest Twenty-Seventh Avenue. Roadway Improvement Projects are heating, or hearing will begin right now. If you're experiencing any technical difficulties, you can contact Ms. Maria Alsate. The number that you're seeing on the screen right there, which is three oh five, five sixty, eighty-two, eighteen, or by email, Maria at icprgroup dot com for assistance. We'll start off for our agenda this evening, we'll start off with the rules of engagement, meet the project teams, non-discrimination policy, project locations, projects, schedules and costs, project scope of work, what to expect, maintenance of traffic, and the questions and answers portion, which will be at the end. To participate during the open discussion, we will first call on in-person attendees to ask questions. We ask that you please form a line behind the microphone and stand on the designated markers of space permits for participants. Joining us virtually, attendees will remain muted throughout the hearing, except for the open discussion session. Use the raise hand button on your go-to webinar panel to provide a comment. Provide your full name first, address, and comment. Attendees are welcome to submit questions, comments using the go-to webinar question panel, and a member of the team will respond during the open discussion. Participants will have three minutes to ask questions and provide comments. This hearing is being recorded. The hearing will begin with a presentation followed by comments and questions portion. If you're calling in via phone, you will not be able to provide any comments during the hearing. However, to provide comments, you can call the number that you see on your screen, seventy-six, four-five-seven, ten, ninety-eight, or by email, Maria at icprgroup dot com. Now, tonight's presentation, the one that you see on your screen, is available on the link that you see on your screen. And the project team will remain both in person and virtually until seven thirty PM. For those joining us in person, be sure to take any information package. If you do not have done so, you can just go to the front and Dusio will provide you with one. You can also access a copy of the presentation by scanning the QR code on the next slide, which we're about to see. So for those joining us remotely from home or their offices, you can grab your cell phones, open up the camera section of your phone, and scan the QR code, and it'll take you right to the project page, which you'll be able to download the presentation. Tonight's team, here available this evening, we'll start off with the first project. There are three projects this evening that we will be discussing. The first portion is located along State Road Ninety, Southwest Eighth Street, from Southwest Seventy-Fourth Court to State Road Nine, Five, Nine, Southwest Fifty-Seventh Avenue. The project manager is Mr. Jose Rivera, who is joining us virtually. Our consultant project manager, Mr. Hans Ribic, who is joining us here in person. The other two projects, the project manager is Mr. Joaquin de la Cruz, who is joining us here, right next to my left, the first one being along Southwest Eighth Street, from Southwest Fifty-Seventh Avenue to Southwest Forty-Second Avenue. And the consultant project manager is Mr. Michel Rodriguez. And the final portion of this area here will be along Southwest Eighth Street, from Southwest Forty-Second Avenue to Southwest Twenty-Seventh Avenue. And the consultant project manager is Mr. Ethel Sierra, who is also joining us here in person. And I am the Community Outreach Specialist for all of these projects. Also joining us remotely, the Mr. Adrian Dakett, who's a historic preservationist. Thank you for joining us. Non-discrimination policy, the Florida Department of Transportation is required to comply with various discrimination laws and regulations, including Title VI of the Civil Rights Act. Public participation at this meeting, sorry about that. Solicitor without regret, regard to race, color, national origin, age, sex, religion, disability, or family status. Persons wishing to express concerns about Title VI may do so by contacting District Six Title VI Coordinator, Mr. Nicholas Danu at three oh five, four seventy, fifty-two, one nine, or in writing, would you see the address on your screen, at FDOT one thousand Northwest One-Leveith Avenue, Miami, Florida, three-three-one-seventy-two, or by email, Nicholas dot Danu at DOT dot state dot FL dot US. Our state Title VI coordinators, Ms. Jacqueline Paramore, eight-five-three, or in writing, at the Equal Opportunity Office, six oh five, so one street, MS six-five, Tallahassee, Florida, three-two-three-ninety-nine, or by email, Jacqueline dot Paramore at DOT dot state dot FL dot US. I'd also like to recognize City of West Miami Commissioner, Mr. Luciano Suarez, who is joining us this evening. Thank you very much, Commissioner, for joining us, and thank you for allowing us to have this hearing here in your city hall. I'd like to read you the project schedules and costs. Production is scheduled for January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. The letting date, May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two. The construction start date, roughly about the fall of two thousand twenty-two. The construction duration is about one year and two months. And the ending of construction will last about until roughly the winter of two thousand twenty-three, with a combined cost of ten, ten million dollars. The project is currently in the design phase. We will continue to work with municipalities, review plans, receive feedback from the public, as we're doing here this evening, and then we will transition the project to the construction team when it begins. The main goal of these roadway improvement projects is to preserve and extend the service life of the roadway by repaving, restriping, and enhancing the general use of safety. Now, these projects are located within the boundaries of the municipalities that you see there on the screen, which include the City of Coral Gables, the City of West Miami, and the City of Miami. With that being said, we're now going to start off with the first portion, which is located along Eighth Street, Southwest Seventy-Fourth Court, to Southwest Fifty-Seventh Avenue. We're going to hand it off first, the floor, to Mr. Hans Ribic, who will explain to us this project. Hans?
Thank you very much, Rodolfo. This project is a segment to, the segment to the further west. It's from west of Southwest Seventy-Fourth Court to west of Southwest Fifty-Seventh Avenue. The project length is one point eight miles in total, and is within a section of Caillaucho that has been designated as a historic road in accordance with Chapter Eighty-Six, Dodge Three-O-A, of the Laws of Florida. As Rodolfo mentioned, this project is within the City of Miami and City of West Miami boundaries. Regards to the project scope, we're going to be meeting and resurfacing the existing roadway. We're going to be upgrading substandard pedestrian ramps and reconstructing damaged sidewalks. We'll be removing abandoned driveways, adjusting the existing utility manhole tops and bulbs within areas of sidewalk reconstruction and pavement resurfacing. We're going to be installing high emphasis pedestrian crosswalks at all decks on signalized intersections and mid-block crossings, including east of Southwest Sixty-Eighth Avenue and east of Southwest Seventy-Third Avenue. We will be also upgrading signalization pedestrian features at all the signalized intersections and signalized mid-block crossings. We will be installing no turn on red, yield to pedestrian electronic signs at Southwest Seventy-Fourth Avenue Signalized Intersection and at Southwest Sixty-Seventh Avenue Signal Intersection. We will also be upgrading lighting to LED at existing mid-block crossings, and we will be upgrading the pavement markings and substandard signs as concurrent standards. Finally, we will be relocating ten sable trees and trimming landscape in order to mitigate crashes due to clear side distance. What to expect during construction? In regards to the maintenance of traffic, we'll have lane closures that will only occur during non-peak hours and non-event days, nights, and weekends. The non-peak hours for this segment are allowed only between ten PM to six AM, weekdays and weekends. The hours of construction operations, we don't have any restriction as long as no lane is closed. For the proposed MOT facing, we're going to have three phases. The Phase One is going to include the outside lanes that will be closed to allow work on the sidewalks. The lane and sidewalk closure will be only allowed at one side at a time. For Phase Two, we will be closing the dual two-way turning lane and maintaining the two eastbound and two westbound lanes open. We will be shifting traffic to the inside in order to perform the improvements at the existing concrete crosswalks at Southwest Seventy-Second Avenue. And for Phase Three, we're going to, is going to be a moving operation. We're going to be closing either inside or outside lanes, and we're going to be performing the meeting of resurfacing and the restriping within the asphalt area. The existing thirty-five miles per hour posted speed will remain the same during construction, and the contractor is required to water and sweep the site in order to minimize construction-related dust. Also, some noise should be expected during daytime and nighttime hours, and access to businesses and residential buildings will be maintained during construction. In this slide, you know, we decided to provide a proposed improvements in two slides. This is a first segment of the project. This slide shows improvements between Southwest Seventy-Fourth Court and Southwest Seventy-Second Avenue. Here you can see the upgrade to the pedestrian ramps, the upgrade to signs and pavement markings, including the high emphasis crosswalks that are being provided at La Rame Boulevard at Southwest Seventy-Fourth Avenue and Southwest Seventy-Second Avenue. In addition, the slides also show the new signalized pedestrian mid-block crossing between Southwest Seventy-Third Avenue and Southwest Seventy-Second Avenue. This crosswalk is also going to be, lighting is also going to be upgraded of these improvements on this crosswalk. This additional mid-block crossing is going to also improve safety by mitigating pedestrian-related crashes. This second slide shows the segment between Southwest Seventy-First Place and Southwest Sixty-Eighth Avenue. Here you can observe the upgrades to pedestrian ramps, as well as a high emphasis crosswalk at Southwest Seventieth Avenue Signalized Intersection. On this portion of the slide, you can see the CSX railroad crossing. We're going to be upgrading pavement markings and also implementing the dynamic envelope, the approaches of the CSX railroad crossing. Here you can see also the upgrades to pedestrian ramps, the replacement of signs to meet current criteria, as well as a refresh pavement markings and asphalt. Next slide, please. This third slide shows the segment between Southwest Sixty-Seventh Avenue to Southwest Sixty-Fourth Avenue. Here you can see also the upgrades to pedestrian curb ramps, signs, and pavement markings. In addition, you can observe the new signalized pedestrian crossing that is being installed between Southwest Sixty-Eighth Avenue and Sixty-Seventh Avenue in the bottom of this slide. See that right? So this mid-block crossing is going to be installed in order to also improve safety by mitigating pedestrian-related crashes. Actually, it was in the top left. And also lighting improvements will be upgraded at that mid-block crossing. And the next slide shows improvement between Southwest Sixty-Third Avenue and Southwest Sixtieth Avenue. Very similar to the previous slides, all pedestrian signal features and curb ramps are being upgraded at Southwest Sixty-Second Avenue and also at the mid-block crossing at east of Southwest Sixtieth Court. We're also providing high emphasis crossings and upgrading all the signage and pavement markings. And finally, this slide shows the eastern end of the project limits, between the west of Silvania Boulevard and west of Southwest Fifty-Seventh Avenue. Pedestrian ramps, as well as new signs and pavement markings are being upgraded. High emphasis crosswalk is also being installed on the existing mid-block crossings, just east of Southwest Fifty-Eighth Court. And on the bottom right, you can see the end of our project limits. However, this is going to tie in into the adjacent, goes with project that Michel Rodriguez is AOR, which is FPAD four-four-three-nine-eight dash one, which will be constructed concurrently. Michel, I'll let Michel explain his segment. Thank you.
Thank you, Hans. Michel Rodriguez, project manager for Project Four-Four-Two-Nine-Eighteen, eighteen dot one, that's fifty-two, that's whole one. Our project, our project limits start like Hans already mentioned, west of Stero Nine Fifty-Nine, Southwest Fifty-Second Avenue, also known as the railroad, and goes all the way to west of Stero Nine Fifty-Three, Southwest Forty-Second Avenue, also known as Reginald Road. We are talking about a mile and a half of roadway improvements. The scope of the project consists as follows. Repaving and restriping the roadway, adjusting the existing utility manhole tops and bulbs, replacing the existing concrete crosswalk at Southwest Fifty-Seventh Avenue and Southwest Fifty-Sixth Avenue with a special emphasis, crosswalk pavement markings. Reconstructing damage on even sidewalk, replacing all pavement markings, providing special emphasis crosswalk markings at all signalized intersections, removing existing pavement loops, and installing video detection systems. Next slide. We're going to be adding two new traffic signals at pedestrian crosswalk at the intersection of Stero Route Ninety, Southwest Eighth Street, and Genoa Street, and also at Southwest Forty-Fourth Avenue. Upgrading lighting at the existing mid-block crossing, west of Fifty-Seven, Fifty-First Avenue, installing no turn on red, yield to pedestrian electronic signs at Southwest Forty-Seven Avenue, Fourth Street. Implementing right turn only at the intersection of Southwest Forty-Fourth Avenue, relocating some landscape, reconstructing driveway at the Southwest Forty-Fourth Avenue. Next slide. What to expect during construction? Our maintenance of traffic consists of lane closures, shall occur only during non-peak hours and non-dates, and non-event day, night, and weekend, except pedestrian crosswalk concrete removal on weekends, daytime only. Non-peak hours are from ten AM, ten PM to six AM, weekdays and weekends. Next slide. Hours of construction operation, there are no restrictions as long as no lanes are closed. Next slide. Our facing consists of four phases. The first phase consists of constructing proposed drainage, curb and gutter, pedestrian ramps, one at a time, driveways, and sidewalk, constructing proposed signalization and lighting work, maintaining traffic on at least two lanes. Phase Two, removing existing crosswalk with rigid payment. This is going to take place on Fifty-Seventh Avenue and Fifty-Sixth Avenue, maintaining at least one lane open at all times. Phase Three and Four consists of repairing and restriping operations, maintaining at least one lane open at all times. Next slide. Regarding the speed, system thirty-five miles per hour will remain. In regard to the dust, the contractor will require, will be required to water and sweep in order to minimize construction-related dust. Next slide. Regarding noise, so noise should be expected during construction, during nighttime, and I'm sorry, during daytime and nighttime hours. Access, access to the businesses and residential will be maintained during construction. Next slide. All right, here we have an overview of our improvement. We start west of Fifty-Seventh Avenue. As you can see, the dark area on the, on the road represents the payment improvements. At Fifty-Seventh Avenue, we're going to be providing high emphasis pedestrian crossings. We're going to reconstruct the pedestrian ramps to comply with the ADA. As part of the signal improvements, we're going to be replacing pedestrian signal heads, push buttons. As part of the improvements also, the department is introducing a new signal that is going to be west of Genoa Street. You can see it on the, on the right side of the top slide, I mean, stop street, borough street. Then, on the, on the street below, you're going to see the existing mid-block crossing. This one is west of Fifty-Seven, Fifty-First Avenue. At that mid-block, we are going to do some lighting improvements. And you can see that as an overview, we are doing pedestrian reconstruction on the pedestrian ramps. The striping is, is the new striping, all signalized intersections that you can see over here on Forty-Nine Avenue. It has a high emphasis. Next slide. All right, over here on the top part, you can see the payment, the new payment, you see the new striping, you see the new high emphasis pedestrian crossings at the intersections. We're doing, replacing the, and upgrading some of those damage and signs that you can see. They were moved to the east, please, right? That way, okay, you can see that one today, right, today, exactly. That, on that, you can see the Southwest Forty-Fourth Avenue. This is another new mid-block signal that is being introduced as part of the pedestrian mobility study that the department has performed through the, through the segment. And at the bottom, you guys can see the end of the project. This is about five hundred feet from the June Road. With that, I'm going to leave you with Ethel Sierra. He's the project manager for the adjacent project that goes to, all the way to Twenty-Seven Avenue.
Thank you, Michel. As Michel just mentioned, this project, this segment of the project is connected to the other first segment introduced by Hans and Michel, and the whole thing is just one full, one full project. This segment covers the area from the State Road Ninety, Nine Fifty-Three, which is Le June Road, Southwest Forty-Second Avenue, and extend all the way to the intersection of State Road Nine, Southwest Twenty-Seven Avenue. This is a hundred percent falls within the City of Coral Gables and Miami, and City of Miami. The project scope is very similar to the entire segments. It's repaving, restriping the roadway. We also upgrading pedestrian ramps and reconstructing damaged sidewalks. We'll be removing abandoned driveways. Obviously, proper communication to each property owner has been addressed and sent out to them. We're replacing the existing concrete crosswalk at Southwest Eighty Street and Thirty-Seven Avenue with a special high emphasis crosswalk pavement markings. We'll be adjusting all existing utility manhole tops and bulbs. That improves the reliability of the roadway. We'll also be installing, as part of the pedestrian study recently conducted by the department, we're installing a new signalized intersection at the intersection of Southwest Eighty Street and Southwest Thirty-Ninth Court, just a little bit close to the Navarro. Next slide, please. We'll also be upgrading signing and pavement markings throughout the corridor, installing a no-left turn signs on the existing red islands at Southwest Eighty Street and Southwest Twenty-Ninth Avenue. That is to improve visibility. We'll also be installing a no-turn-on-rail, yield-to-pedestrian electronic signs at the intersections of Ponce de Leon, Galeano, and Southwest Twenty-Seven Avenue. We'll be upgrading signalized pedestrian features. Also, we'll be upgrading lighting to lighting emitting dial, also known as LED lights at existing mid-block crossings. It will be relocating landscaping, all the landscaping will be relocated within the limits of the corridor. What to expect during construction, I've mentioned it before. We're going to perform lane closure, and this will occur only during non-peak hours and non-event days, nights and weekends. Non-peak hours have been coordinated with all the segments and basically are the same from ten PM to six AM, weekdays and weekends. Hours of construction operations, there's no restrictions as long as no lane is closed. We have divided as well and coordinated throughout the segments. We divided the project in phases. So in this particular segment, we have Phase One. We, we'll be closing the outside lane, the outside lane, and constructing the proposed pedestrian ramps, sidewalks, curb and gutter, all the signal work and lighting work. The work shall be done one side of the roadway at a time, and this is just to maintain pedestrian access at all time. Second phase, we're going to be shifting the traffic to either the inside or the outside lanes and maintain at least one lane open in each direction. And this work is for the intersection of And this work is for the intersection of Southwest Eightieth Street and Southwest Thirty-seven Avenue. What we're doing in this, in this part of the maintenance of traffic is we're gonna be reconstructing the existing concrete crosswalk at this intersection. The last phase is phase three. We're gonna be closing either the inside or outside lanes to accommodate moving operations, and this is just the restriping, repaving, and installing all the signs and payment markings. The speed, as you know, the posted speed is thirty-five miles per hour. It will remain. We're not reducing it, we're not increasing it. Thus, as every project, we, we're gonna require the contractor to water and sweep in order to minimize construction-related dust. Noise, so noise should be expected during daytime and nighttime hours, and access to all businesses and residential will be maintained at all time during construction. Now, what we did is we prepared the same theme as some road plots, what we call it, describing the, the work. And this project, as you can see, the intersection of Le Jun Road and Southwest Eightieth Street is not impacted by the improvements of this, of this project. So we just started a little bit east of that intersection. As you can see, the, the blacktop that you see is just that new repaving operations. We are in elementing high emphasis throughout all the crosswalk. This is not only the single-lized crosswalk, but also every single-sized street, and this is just to enhance pedestrian safety. I also, in this part of the slide, you can see also we are introducing a brand-new signalized intersection at Thirty-Ninth Court. This is also part of the study performed by the, by the department. And then we also upgrading all pedestrian curb ramps, pedestrian detectors. Basically, and right at the Galeano Street, we are upgrading the intersection, changing the controllers. Some of the controllers that are there are old. So now, this is a good opportunity to upgrade it to up related standards. And we also introducing at some conflict locations, no turning vehicles with the pedestrian, and that's also to improve pedestrian safety. The second segment covers between thirty-seven Avenue, thirty-seven Avenue and thirty-fourth Avenue. Right at the intersection of thirty-seven Avenue, basically, we are introducing the high emphasis crosswalk. And we, together with the same signs that we have in at all intersections, signing and payment markings. And, and also, just keep going to the next one. You can see this is a very similar type of work. The work that we're doing in this corridor is, is just repaving, restriping, and upgrading pedestrian safety pretty much. I want you to know that there's no widening in this project at all. There's no additional lane. There's really, it's just a maintenance kind of projects, and you can see that. Once you move a little bit east of the thirty-fourth Avenue, we do have a pedestrian crosswalk that's existing. And this is all we're doing at that pedestrian cross, crosswalk, our midblock crossing that we call it, we're just upgrading the lighting. If you move to the next slide, please. This is a segment between thirty-third Avenue and thirty-first Avenue. This is a section where actually the lane becomes just a four lane undivided. This is a very quiet area because we do have the cemetery right in front of it. So basically, all we're doing is just restriping, repaving, and adding the, the crosswalk and upgrading ADA curb ramps. No impacts at all to this section of the, of the, of the project. Thirty-second Avenue is the next signalized intersection, the same thing, pedestrian features have been upgraded, as well as all the next two midblock crossings. The last segment is, it covers from thirty-seven Avenue to the end of the project. And this segment also has another pedestrian midblock crossing. So as you can see, within the section between Le Jun and Twenty-seven Avenue, there's several intersections. So maintaining the pedestrian access at all time is very, very simple. We're gonna require the contractor, and we have added a lot, a lot of different special provisions to make sure the pedestrian is maintained access using longitudinal devices, all of the top light equipment that now is used in order to make sure the pedestrian can actually have a safe way to get from one point to another. Finally, the, the, the project ends right at the intersection of Twenty-seven Avenue, where we always doing at that intersection is just adding some no pet steel to pedestrian blank outside. Now, as part of this presentation, we had to cover some sections of the state highways system, which is also, as you know, Calle Ocho. It, it is a state highway, and then I'm gonna let Hans Reebek to cover these sections of the presentation. Hans, please.
Thank you, Aethel. Well, as we previously mentioned, Calle Ocho. Calle Ocho is, is also designated as a state historic highway as per compliance with chapter, sorry, as per compliance with chapter eighty-six dash three oh eight of the laws of Florida. And we perform an engineering review of the law, and we compare against our project improvements, and we determine that they're compliant with the applicable provisions of chapter eighty-six dash three oh eight. And also, we have summarized the applicable sections below. Section two compliance. Section two of the Florida law for Calle Ocho states to cut or remove any tree having a diameter at the thickest part in excess of six inches within thirty-five feet of either side of the paved surface of Calle Ocho, or to engage in an activity which requires a removal without replacement of such a tree. Based on the scope of work of the three combined projects from Southwest seventy-fourth Court to Southwest twenty-seventh Avenue, there are ten existing sable palm trees under the western project, F P I D four four three nine one dash one. There's three sable palm trees under the project in the middle, F P I D four four three nine one eight dash one. And there's one sable palm tree and one bridal bilt tree under the eastern project, F P I D four four three nine one seven dash one, that will be relocated within the project limits in order to mitigate crashes due to clear side distance and allow for installation of pedestrian midblock crosses. Compliance of the law. Since no trees, since no trees will be removed without the replacement of a tree, this project is compliant with this section of chapter eighty-six dash three oh eight. In addition, the intent of relocating the trees is to improve traffic and pedestrian safety by clearing the intersection side triangles as feasible and allowing for the installation of the pedestrian midblock crosses. Next slide, please. The continuation of section two also states the following. To alter the physical dimensions or location of Calle Ocho except for the addition of primary or secondary roads intersecting the limits of Calle Ocho, to erect, demolish, or significantly alter the appearance of any structure, including but not limited to walls, fences, sidewalks, and curbing within a hundred feet of either side of the paved surface of Calle Ocho with the following exceptions. Bicycle path and recreational facilities, the construction of which does not require the removal of any structure deemed worthy of preservation by the division. The division shall be consulted, consulted, and official approval by the division obtained before any work is begun. Erections, demolitions, alterations, and restorations undertaken for the purposes of preserving or enhancing the historic or scenic value of Calle Ocho and its surroundings. The division shall be consulted, and official approval of the division obtained before any work is begun. Based on the scope of work as previously mentioned, this is a TR improvement project in, in which we are repaving, restriping, upgrading pedestrian signals, upgrading pedestrian curb ramps, removing abandoned driveways, and reconstructing damaged sidewalk, as well as installing new signalized midblock crossings that were recommended by a F D O T Traffic Operations Study as also requested by a City of Miami resolution. Compliance of the law. Since the physical dimensions of Calle Ocho will be preserved and the restoration undertaken under these three R projects are solely for the purposes of preserving and enhancing the historic safety and scenic value of Calle Ocho and its surroundings, this project is compliant with this chapter, this section of chapter eighty-six, eighty-six dash three oh eight. Now, within the project limits, we also have two additional roads that intersect Calle Ocho. One of the roads is Southwest sixty-second Avenue. Southwest sixty-second Avenue also was designated as a state historic highway as per the chapter ninety-three dash two ninety-four of the laws of Florida between the segment of Eighth Street and Southwest Twenty-Fourth Street, also known as Coralway. We review again the law and propose improvements under this project. And we also determine that we are in compliance with the law and, and that there's no improvement that deviates from what is on the law. The relevant section of the law is summarized here, which, which is section two, which states the portion of Southwest sixty-second Avenue between Southwest Eightieth Street and Coralway is designated a historic highway. This portion of road may not be widened without the approval of the city commission of the City of West Miami. Again, based of this, on the scope of work, the scope is limited to only the milling and resurfacing and restriping of the intersection of Southwest Eighth Street and Southwest sixty-second Avenue. As a result, there's no proposed widening in the scope of this three R project, and this is compliant with section of chapter ninety-three dash two ninety-four. Next slide, please. Finally, there's a third road that is also designated as a state historic road. This is a portion of Southwest fifty-seventh Avenue, also known as Red Road in Coral Gables. And it was designated a historic highway as per chapter eighty-nine dash three oh eight three of the laws of Florida. We also summarize the applicable section below, which is section two, in which it states that the portion of Southwest fifty-seventh Avenue, Eighth Street and Sunset Drive is designated as a state historic highway. Any alteration of the physical dimensions or locations of Red Road meeting strip thereof, that land adjacent or to, or any part of the original composition of the entrance. Again, the scope is limited to repave and restrip the intersection at Southwest fifty-seventh Avenue. There is no proposed alteration of the physical dimensions nor widening in the scope of this three R project. As a result, this project is also compliant with this section of chapter eighty-nine dash three oh, three oh eight.
Thank you very much, Hans. We will now start the questions and answers portion. Please submit your comments in the question box for those that are at home. After addressing the comments in the question box, we will open the microphones. And if we aren't able to answer your question, the project team will provide a written response after the hearing. You would like to speak, please press the raise your hand button. Participants will have three minutes to provide comments and questions to allow others to speak. Staff will be available to answer questions in the order they are received, and that's time permits. If your question is not responded to during the event, a here, a response will be provided in writing following the hearing. And then we will start off first with the folks that are joining us here in person. But before we get started, I'd like to provide my contact information. You can call me there, seven eight six five one nine seventy-one sixty, and more information is available on the F D O T Miami date dot com. And before we move forward, I'd like to also put up the Q R code once again to grab the cell phones, open up the camera on your phone where you can obtain tonight's presentation. You can see there for yourselves and find out more information about this project. And any questions, again, you can send us an email, or you can ask right here, right now. With that being said, we're gonna start off first with the folks down here. I'd like to first call on the folks that are joining us today. We do have Commissioner, West Miami City, West Miami Commissioner, Mr. Luciano Suarez. Commissioner, would you like to make a statement? You're just coming to the podium just to make sure that we get it on the record.
Do you have questions? Go ahead.
Go ahead, Commissioner. Twenty-seven. If we could have your first name and last name for the record, sir. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, good afternoon or good evening. My name is Val Custer, and I live at eight seventeen Madrid Street, just on the block here. So I was, I was listening with much interest your presentation, and there's a lot of very good things that you're gonna be doing. I have a couple suggestions. I don't know if they will, if they're part of the scope or not. But I've thought that perhaps doing some landscaping in the middle of the street. I've seen other streets like Flagler and Coralway and Bird Road. In the medium, mediums, they have like landscaping with bushes and flowers and whatever. Since it is a historic street, I don't know, perhaps that would add some beauty to it, you know? Because right now it's just a plain street, very much traveled. There's not any, any kind of artistic look to it. If something historic, it should have something. That's just an observation. I didn't hear anybody was talking about landscaping in the middle, the middle. But in my case, I, I heard that Michelle spoke about a light at Genoa Street. All right, you wanna put the street light in Genoa? Say that again?
Yeah, west of Genoa Street, we're gonna add a midblock pedestrian sign.
A what again?
Pedestrian sign, pedestrian sign.
Or a light, a street light?
Yeah, well, we're gonna, yeah, definitely, we're gonna, that pedestrian sign as part of the criteria has to be lit, yeah, you're right.
That's where, that's where the hospital is at, in Genoa.
There is, yeah, there is, there is a hospital on the south side.
On this, on the east side.
On the east side, okay, no, yeah.
So do you plan to put anymore? Because the problem that we're having on Southwest Eighth Street between fifty-seven and the June Road is that cars drive there faster than thirty-five miles an hour. No one obeys the, the rules. They go forty-five, fifteen about. Why? Because there are no lights, and no streetlights. From fifty-seven all the way to the hospital, which is on fifty, fifty, I think, fifty, the hospital, Kindred Hospital. That's about eight blocks. People just go zing, 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 zing. Some street lighting could help the flow and could add to the calming, to the calming of the traffic. I mean, that's my observation. I've been living here about thirty years, and I've noticed in the last thirty years that the traffic has increased significantly. We know why. The population increased, more people, more cars, people getting lazier. They don't wanna take public transportation, they wanna take their own car, motorcycles, everything. So perhaps you might wanna consider that. The other thing I heard you say, and I don't know if I remember exactly, when you were talking about repaving, repaving, you're gonna do a lot of the restoration because that street was done back in nineteen ninety-five when, when, when drain pipes were installed, I think, back in ninety-five, ninety-two, ninety-three, and ninety-five. Since then, nothing has happened except some minor repairs. So I noticed that you're going to, the, and some of the streets that go north and south from east and west Eighth Street that you might repave is to the, to the south and to the north of the street. You're gonna do a bit of repaving where there are some residential houses. So does that mean that you will repair also their driveways?
Sir, as, as part of the, the repaving, that's what you'll refer.
Yeah.
We go all the way, yeah, just to the return. That's the idea.
Sorry.
Sorry, having a problem with it. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, yeah. So usually, the department doesn't go beyond their returns because we keep our project within the department's right of way. What you're referring, south and north of Eighth Street are side streets. And I, the jurisdiction belongs to City of Cora Gables, City of Miami. In some cases, to Miami, they count. We don't anticipate any restriping of the driveways, at least on my segment, which is the middle project, the one that goes from fifty-seven Avenue to west of forty-seven Avenue. Going back to some of the questions that you have regarding the landscaping. Landscaping in the median, right, is not part of the scope. Definitely, in order to provide landscaping in the median, as you have mentioned it, we have to do some modification. uh, we have, have to do some modification to the typical section of the road. Remember, this is a historical road. It's been designated as a historical road, as Hans has mentioned it. So, uh, this is something that it got to be, we're going to take it to the department, and they got to go over the status, I mean, to the status to make sure that we are in compliance. However, this is a, a big change regarding the typical section of the A Street, Calle Ocho, right? Uh, also, uh, regarding the, um, the lighting that you're mentioning, um, as part of some of the improvements that we have, um, at Geno Street, where we introducing a, a new signal, a new mid-block signal. Uh, we look at some of the streets, uh, next to it, adjacent to the, to the crossing, and we are doing some retrofitting. That is going to help the lighting on that segment. However, um, we don't have, as part of the scope, uh, we don't have a lighting improvement that goes from, you mentioned from Fifty-seventh to Fifth Street. Uh, as part of the public meeting, this has been recorded, and, uh, we're going to look into it.
Okay, let, let me, let me rephrase a little bit. When I meant lighting, I mean, I meant, I meant street light for the, for traffic, traffic lights.
You meant signal.
Signal.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were referring to a lighting system.
Right, right. No, I, I missed so. Probably I meant, I said that, but I meant, uh, street lighting for the, to, to control the traffic.
Yes.
Because the traffic from Fifty-seventh all the way to, to the Kindred Hospital, yeah, where is the first light in here. Very few cars stop there. Or the light is always green. I've never seen it red. Perhaps there, in order to provide some street calming, some traffic calming. Now, going back to my, to my, do I have enough practice?
Yeah. Go, go ahead, please, please. Here, just have a thirty.
Is it okay I have a, a part or not?
Yeah, go right ahead, go right ahead.
Going back to the landscaping in the middle. Yes, it is a historical street, but it doesn't have to be a street like it was in the nineteen twenties, or thirties, or earlier, maybe during Flagler's time. Uh, being a historical street doesn't mean that we cannot make any improvement. So the last comment I would like to make is perhaps some landscaping in the middle, if you were to consider it, it would add a significant more beauty to it.
Uh, can I, can I take a, a, a part of that? Let me, let me respond to the landscaping, um, question. Well, every time, I, I was one of the engineers of record, uh, for Flagler, where we introduced, uh, some median landscaping. Well, in order to do such a project, it requires an access management study. Because, as you know, you only have four lanes, which is two lanes in each direction, and one, the one, what we call it, two lane, we call it two left, left or lane. It is used, it is used for traffic to access property, businesses, and, and side, and side streets as well. So once you introduce the medium, and that happens a lot in, in, in Flagler, is we have to restrict a lot of traffic to, to all those businesses. And, and even some people in, in, in Flagler still today, they kind of oppose to that medium because it completely changed their access that the way they used to get into their business. So even though landscaping is beautiful, and I believe Southwest Eightieth Street on its side has a lot of palms, and we also, as you mentioned it, we're restricted by the law that we're not supposed to alter at all. Uh, and once we introduce that medium, basically, we're going to be killing the, the access. I know we, we're going to be gaining palms, saying, as you can see, when you, when you drive through Flagler, people would like to see a bigger, a bigger trunk and a bigger tree, saying, it's impossible because also it takes just a minute for so, a car to go off track and they will be hitting a tree. So that's also a safety concern. Uh, the department in this type of projects, they do not introduce landscaping, uh, because of the limited, uh, I would say the limited scope that is just, uh, repaving and restriping. But sometimes when they, they do have to make a major improvement is to, when they have the right-of-way and the pop, you know, the, the locations where they can do things, they take into, into consideration some landscaping. But I, I don't think this, this quarter really, really will be appropriate to, to do such a thing. Uh, it is my opinion based on what we did in Flagler, but, uh, but we always, we're here to take all this concern to the department, and, and that's, that's all we can say at this time.
One final thing. I would not consider landscaping between seventy-four to fifty-seven because it, it's a very commercial area. Know that about.
Yeah.
Very commercial. And I would not consider that between the June and twenty-seven, because it's also fairly commercial. But between Fifty-seventh and Forty-second, where you have the cemetery, you have hospital, you, you have a number of large medical concerns. There are two empty lots, there are C V S, huge lot that is going to be built. It's going, it's zone for ninety-nine units. Probably it is going to be a, a condominium there. And then just a couple of blocks east of that, there's another empty lot that was recently sold for one point six million, I believe, less than a, less than an acre, three quarters of an acre, something like that. That's going to be some significant problem as well. So the landscaping that I'm considering should be only between Fifty-seventh and not even all the way to Forty-second, but before that, maybe up to Cortez Street, which is fairly residential. All right, gentlemen, thank you much for your.
Thank you, sir.
I apologize that I took so much time, but I wanted to make that known on behalf of the residents and neighborhood experts. Send me to represent them on the Coral Gables side.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for attending.
Happy, uh, for the July.
Likewise. Uh, okay, we'd like to call, uh, City of West Miami Commissioner, uh, Suarez.
I'm ready. Uh, I wanted to, according to the, please keep in the background, okay? You sure? You heard me, yeah. Talking about commercial in A Street. And I saw you before. The project is nice to me. I am an engineer, and I am not, uh, like it is yet a lot, uh, looking for those little details of our problems and that because I just want to look at the whole thing. And I have a question for you, Mr. Juan. You said three projects, right?
That's correct.
Now, the three projects are going to start the same time?
Um, I'm going to go, yeah, for the, most of they are scheduled, but I'm going to relay it to the team for the most part, but just know that.
According to this, this is September.
That's correct. Yeah, that, that's, that's the estimated start time.
Okay. Now, I want to be sure, keep in the background. I have a mission in City of West Miami. And I represent, I represent many merchants here. They are our owners, they, and they live here. And then we have been through year and a half, the COVID-19. The mask has been almost mandatory during that time. Many of our merchants have been suffering the business, right? We are starting to open. Your boss, the governor of the communities, he tried to open the state. We are doing, we have been doing very well, generally. Now, imagine one of you, or whoever's signed in September, is done their work, was a merchant here. Merchant, September is, comes the holiday, from Halloween, Thanksgiving, Christmas. My suggestion is start the work after January, in the prior. So we don't create more progress for our merchants as a commercial, and this, you have to recognize, every street is, some areas is very commercial. And the area that you are projecting is a commercial street. So we are going to getting out from the COVID-19, and then you coming with a work in the industry that even you said one lane is going to be open, but one lane is going to be closed, and it's going to be a problem. So I suggest it's not convenient for our residents and our merchants, this work is starting in September. I just spoke to the Commissioner, my old resident, City of Miami, who is the, the present, the Miami, but on the north side of the street. He told me, I have no idea, I don't have any knowledge of the D O T is going to start September anything this year. You should check with the office in City of Miami, the district, the my old resident, the commissioner, of course. And that's my main suggestion. The work have been done, it will be provenable, will be very convenient, the renovation of the street. But my suggestion is that be after January. Please keep our residents, our merchants happy, if we may call them happy, because I think they do not deserve that year and a half with the COVID-19. Somebody come with the tractor and the backhoe, you know, broken, the, the asphalt, and this, this one to be a problem. So that's why I suggest you call whoever is necessary to go to, I would call. At least it's start after January because it's too hard now. After, I'm going to repeat, after COVID-19 comes the D O T twenty. It's not nice. So that's my suggestion. Please try to start work in the prior.
Absolutely. Mr., Mr. Suarez, uh, thank you, thank you very much for, for your comment. I have a quick question. Your concern is mainly for the segment between seventy-fourth quarter.
No, no, my concern is the whole thing.
Okay.
My concern is the whole work. Merchants are here in my city. Merchants are there in my neighbor's city. But I, our merchants from Coral Gables, the City of Miami are going to suffer. And our merchants are going to suffer. And it, it's some area, it's a company, not incorporated, they are going to suffer. So we should try to give the agency opening for this next year for business, I think. I think it's the wrong time, September. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Suarez. Yes, um, for, for the record, uh, sir, in the link closure, as we mentioned before, we will disseminate the message to D O T and to the construction office to see if they can reconsider, eh, that day, sir.
I know, while you have a working street, you have to cross one line, a long, another, it is normal. But my point is, in the normal, after February, after the holidays, that's the normal way to construct a street. And you, you mentioned here for the nine hours, right?
The hours are from ten P M. to six A M. That's why.
It's going to be, that's the good thing. But if you, if you work during the night, during the day, you have the problem.
During the day.
It doesn't work, it doesn't mean, doesn't, doesn't mean that you work during the night, the street is going to be open clean during the day. The, the street is going to be under construction, so. During the day, in our time, it's going to be under construction. Even people are working there, but still. It's a problem with the traffic, it's a problem with the merchants. And I think you should think in the merchants, because the merchants pay taxes. And the taxes is a problem money.
Yes, sir.
And this work is a problem, is, is, is a work with a problem money. So we have to think in all around our, our neighbors.
And Commissioner, just to clarify, it's not this September, it's two thousand twenty-two.
Well, I thought you were talking about twenty-two.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, trying to es, es, espec, specifically, trying to make a picture.
Sure.
The holiday area in the, in the, in September to December. And then after that, it's not that. But at least our merchants, four, four months after the COVID-19, please, they deserve you to have a peaceful, hey, nine more weeks. I hope you understand that.
Can I, can I give you my five cents on that one, Commissioner? Okay, this is how it is up. I have had several projects that, that actually, when we take it to construction, they consider moving that because the same type of concern. I don't want to commit on behalf of the department for that, but I'm almost positive that, don't forget, the plan's only at ninety percent, and we still have a little bit, probably, I know, the six months to go. Uh, the final schedule has not been set, even though we have September twenty-second on the papers that we, we disseminate. But that's because that's what we have on the schedule. Obviously, now that you bring that up to us, we're going to take it to construction, and I'm, and I'm sure that they, they, they will make that consideration. I'm just thinking about something, since this project has, um, uh, new signals. Usually, construction, what they do is they, 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 even though they announced that the project will start on September, that doesn't mean that they break ground in September, uh, because they do provide to the, to the constructor, I believe, sometimes even sixteen, ninety, up to a hundred and eighty days sometime for acquisition, uh, time, so they can actually secure and order the manufacturing, some of the light, the traffic lights and things like that. So that might be something that it may help us to, to get that, to, to start it in, in January. Uh, something else that I want to mention is that, eh, the D O T, even in projects where they allow construction very close to the holidays, they, they, they do have a mandate closed on all the holidays. And, and I believe also during the Christmas time, they close all the way from the twenty, something, all the way until January sixth. So that for sure is not going to happen. Because I'm thinking now, let's say, for example, we're going to move and start in January or February, whatever is decided. But don't forget that this project will last three hundred and sixty-five days plus. So even, we might start it on the two twenty-second, but when we give the go-ahead to the contractor to start in February, is, we're going to have to, we cannot say, look, once you hit, eh, September twenty-twenty-three, stop working and then reinitiate in, in twenty-twenty-four. That, that cannot happen, and that's why we have a lot of provisions in the specifications to not to work on holidays. And even the event in Calle Ocho in April, that, that, all the section is going to be completely locked in that, we cannot open anything like that. So, uh, I think you, you brought up a very good, uh, valuable point. I also want to emphasize during construction, there will be an, another outreach of, it's similar to what Rodolfo is doing, uh, is that his job is going to be twenty-four-seven, pretty much taking all the complaints. Don't forget that this is an F D O T project, and we, what we're trying to do is all the complaints for the resident don't go to you or to the, the city, it goes directly to the department, because at the end of the day, this is an F D O T project. So we're going to assign somebody that is constantly both going to be communicating with the business's owner, resident, allow them, look, this week, we're going to be closing this intersection. And they're going to be doing flyers, similar to what they did with this, constantly leaving notes on the, on the businesses and telling the, look, this is going to happen, so everybody will be aware a hundred percent. The idea is to partner not only with the city, but each of the stakeholders, so we don't have to do. Uh, I, just to tell you, I, I started my career when I was, uh, Calle Ocho was reconstructed. That was back in what, two thousand three, two thousand two, that was the construction. I remember the nightmare about Calle Ocho. But however, and, and the nightmare was because it was a typical reconstruction project, but that was the only time, so we can actually get the job done. It, it, and it takes a lot of effort and, and a lot of communication. But this is nothing really related. This, actually, the major work is that repaving and restriping, which what we consider, consider a moving operation, and we're going to be doing it completely at night. So I think we appreciate your comment, Commissioner, and we definitely.
All right, and I appreciate your nice explanation.
Okay.
But that nice explanation doesn't mean that, huh? You were talking, planning was a big problem. I don't want to talk about that, because that, that's a nightmare. But that was two years ago. And that was, that was terrible, terrible. So I don't want to talk about that, but I just want to strike in the mind of everybody. Then, we're talking about, we have a special time, unfortunately, very, very sad, the COVID-19. And I'm talking about after one and a half year, you know, the problems, we should let our commercial area, why, let them try to make a piece of a buy. And then the nice work that you said is going to be perfect, start after that.
Okay.
Then, you know, you're going to be the moment waiting. So far, you know, we have been working nicely. D O T, I think, our city, you know, the work around here has been very, very well done. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
And now, team, we're going to, go, go right ahead, go right ahead.
I, I want you pay for, for Rango, I want you for Rango. City of, anywhere they have to do it.
I like to offer, Commissioner Suarez, a compromise, a compromise. Why don't you start the first phase in our game? Would you say the least, least for our, least for our, and which will be the least?
If you can get close to the mics.
If you can get close to the mics, we can get everything on the record.
I'm sorry. I, I wanted to offer Commissioner Suarez the compromise of starting, starting the Coral Gables. 57th, 42nd, since it is the least commercial, it's going to be less interference with the businesses. We would like to be the first ones, because that way, maybe we'll get some of the landscape, the green area. What you can do for us is put a little greenery for us in the middle. I understand.
Sierra.
Mr. Sierra's concerned about the attorney, but because we have less businesses, we have larger lots, we have larger businesses, that, that same problem does not exist in our particular area as it is in Commissioner Suarez and then east of the June. So that's, that's the compromise. Perhaps you might want to consider it and take it to your, to your, to your colleagues in Tallahassee or where you have your headquarters and consider that. We, we, I mean, I'm not speaking for the city, for Gables, I'm only a resident. Logically speaking, I would start what is the least impacted, considering the businesses that will be impacted while the work is being done, which I agree with Commissioner Suarez. So start there, and that way, you'll make Commissioner Suarez happy. You'll make the commissioners in Miami happy, because that's where they have mostly businesses between Le Journe and 27. And you know, right there by Home Depot, there's lots of businesses there. So the impact will be great. But in order to calm the pressures that will come with it, you start in the second, in the middle section. I think that would make, in my mind, more sense to get everybody ready, who be readier, if they don't be prepared for what's coming, but without that impact on the businesses. But also remember, Commissioner Suarez, that the people that will be working on the project are also employees. They will be also generating income, and the sooner they can start to do that, the more money will come into, into the coffers of Miami-Dade.
Now, I, I want to give, because we have some folks that are sending questions online, I want to give them an opportunity, so. We have time, we're going to bring you in. It's okay. No, thank you, thank you. All right, team, we do have a couple of questions here virtually. This one comes from Emily Patty. Emily wants to know, what measures are you going to put in place to reduce the number of drivers cutting to, into adjacent neighborhoods and speeding down parallel residential streets to circumvent traffic created by this construction? Local traffic only, no through traffic signs, et cetera. So what, what's going to be done during construction to prevent these vehicles using a street to cut through the inner streets and they won't cut through the neighborhoods?
Well, the MOT, the maintenance of traffic that we're providing, it's, it was meant to have always one lane of traffic, at least minimum in one direction. And as you can see, the lane closure is really going to happen between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. Obviously, we've been, we've been doing traffic counts, we've been doing other thing in, in Cayocho. During that time, it's not like in the regular daytime. So we don't have too much concern of that. I mean, people, we're still going to do that. The majority of the, of the project is going to happen at night. And, and we don't, I mean, whoever wants to take a shortcut, there's nothing we can do about it, but there are going to be sufficient sign, there will be sufficient portable message sign communicating that they, they will still have that, that open access, you know, so.
So, so again, she wants to know if there will be any signage or anything that won't, that will prevent vehicles from cutting through during construction at night?
The, what, I think, whatever we have on, on, on the, on the regular, every time that we do a lane closure, we have to pretty much redirect traffic through the new lane. But no, I, I don't think, what I mean, we never use something that we can prevent people do not make a right turn, do not make a U-turn. I have seen when you have to close completely a road, then you have to say local traffic only. But I mean, if we had to, if we had to introduce some of that, whoever wants to violate, then they start getting, doing all the shortcuts, they're still going to do it. I don't know, you guys want to say something?
Yeah, I mean, what they feel stated applies to the three segments. Basically, we did a lane closure analysis, and that's why we determined that to avoid impacting the businesses and also the adjacent residents, it was determined to close or allow only for lane closures during nighttime between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM, when there's not that much traffic. So people will not be desperate to cut off through, you know, residential or roads or, or local roads. So, so that's the idea.
Yeah, we, we're not introducing any detours or anything like that. I mean, I guess people get educated as the project really gets going. For example, if I know that I can avoid 62nd Avenue, and then I have to use, for example, 72nd Avenue, I will do that. But again, it's just, but it's very hard to, to anticipate that people are actually going to be using a detour. So no detours are introduced here at all either, so.
And also, we, we are only closing one lane. So we're, you know, there's going to be one lane open on one bound and two lanes on the other. So, and it's going to be during nighttime, so traffic is minimum. So I'm pretty sure that people will avoid, you know, taking local roads to, 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 you know, to detour.
Basically, we don't expect any, any impact on the adjacent streets, okay, this project?
Not at all.
That is correct. Thank you, Jose. Okay, our next question comes from Rolando Jimenez. Rolando wants to know, has FDOT considered the proposed Ludlam Trail Project as part of the Southwest East Street Project?
Well, we have coordinated with Miami-Dade County Parks and Recreation. They are currently under planning design stage, which is a preliminary design phase. And as we understand, the Ludlam Trail is going to start design in, in a year and construction, I believe, in like three years. So it's going to come after us, but we are coordinating with them. They're aware of our improvements, and we are considering their final configuration for our current design.
Thank you. The next one is from Kanjan Dave. Dave wants to know, since new signals and new signal crossings will be added, how, how will that affect traffic or on already congested Cayocho?
Well, the signals that are, they're being introduced, the signal that are being introduced in the second, 57 to pretty much 42nd Avenue, are supposed to say, we block cross. They're going to be actuated as pedestrians request the timing for that, for the light. Are no, the signals are not being proposed for any type of improvement capacity for traffic. It's just for, from the point of view of pedestrian safety. Regarding the other two intersections, I think they're introducing new signals, regular signals. On that, I think, you have one.
That's the only one in 39th Court. We are introducing a brand new signal. But again, it's that the new signal is really for actuation for pedestrian as well. And, and I think you, you hit the target, Michael, because even though we are adding all these new signals, it will take somebody to push a button in order to activate, and if there's no pedestrian ready to cross, to cross, I'm sorry, they won't be, it will, it will remain in green. As you can see, on one side, we have the gentleman here, you know, requesting some more, some more signals, and some other people really want to do the more, not, not to do more signal, because Cayocho is already congested. And that's also go back to my original question about the landscaping. If we need to add the landscaping in the media, we also creating more and more congestion, because we are reducing the capacity of the road. Unfortunately, we don't have that much right away to, to do more and more, so. Thank you for that question.
Yes, and let me add, in regards to the segment to the west, we are adding two signalized mid-block crossings, as we previously mentioned. One is between Southwest 73rd Avenue and Southwest 72nd Avenue, and the other one is between Southwest 68th Avenue and Southwest 67th Avenue. The intent, as Michelle and Nathan mentioned, is that they will only activate it or, or, you know, turn on red when a pedestrian presses a push button to cross. And these mid-block crossings throughout the entire Cayocho project were added as part of a City of Miami resolution and an FDOT pedestrian safety study that was conducted due to some pedestrian fatal crashes. There were some fatalities, and they studied this, and these were the locations closer to where the pedestrian fatalities occurred. And this is a mitigation strategy in order to reduce pedestrian crashes and improve overall pedestrian and vehicular safety.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next question comes from Ms. Maria Herrera. She wants to know, with all three project, will all three project segments start at the same time? What is the start date? And what is the duration of each project segment? So they will start out at the same time, and the estimated time is September of 2022, but roughly the fall of 2022 is what we're estimating. Now, what is the duration of each project segment that, that varies, you know, depending on where the construction team wants to begin? So that is really something that will be determined later on as we get closer to the end of the design. When is the new traffic light on 39th Court is scheduled to be installed? I think that's also will be determined when construction begins, if the contractors is hired, that they will have more information on that. As of right now, we don't have any more questions. Again, if you'd like to ask any questions, you can submit it on our question box, or you can raise your virtual hand, and we'll open up the microphones. We're here until 7:30, so we got about 12 minutes left. You're part of this public hearing. Once again, if you'd like to ask any questions to our project team in relation to this project, feel free to submit your question in the question box, or you can raise your virtual hand, or if anyone from the public would like to have, if you have any more comments, go right ahead. And again, just take your, your name again for the record, just to make sure that.
Well, I'm sorry, for Michelle, for Mr. Rodriguez. Just want to have a clarification. In the Coral Gables section between 57th and 42nd, are there any traffic, any new traffic lights coming? When you say traffic light, you mean a signal?
Yeah, yeah.
A new signal?
Yeah.
Okay. There are two mid-block pedestrian crosses. Can you hear me? I'm sorry. There is, there are two new mid-block pedestrian crosses. This is not a full signalized intersection where you got vehicle traffic on, on old approaches. The two new signalized intersections are the one that is going to be west of Genoa, and that signalized intersection is actuated, meaning that in order for the light to go from green to red for the pedestrian to cross, it has to be exact. They have to press the push button, meaning that the disruption to the traffic is minimal. It's just at the moment that the pedestrian requests the time to be able to cross. There, we have an existing signalized intersection, which is right now west of 51st Avenue. All right, there's one signalized existing signalized intersection. And another, the, the second one that is going to be new within that segment that you're referring to, is going to be at east of 44th Avenue. I don't know if you're familiar with the area, there's an, there's an auto park.
Yes.
And a gas station. All right, it's going to be there.
But there's no existing traffic light there.
No, there's not. Those are new.
All right, this, my question is, will you be able to put, is there a possibility to put a traffic light between 57th and, and Genoa? In that six-block section where cars drive at all kinds of speeds? And I have, it has been all kinds of police checking the traffic, and they have stopped a lot of people because it's six blocks, seven, six, seven, eight blocks, they just speed up like Indianapolis 500.
Well.
I don't know. My suggestion is to put the traffic light.
Okay, but I just going to, okay, I'm just going to clear up. The intent of the signal, of a signalized intersection is not to enforce, all right, the posted speed of the segment is just to provide capacity, all right, for the intersection. Meaning that if, in order to provide a signalized intersection, we have to provide a study. It has to be warranted, meaning that it has to be at demand for it. We can't just go and spend the money just to have a signal that if you think about it, sir, in order for the signal to go from green to red, it has to be at demand from the side streets. So if you don't have the demand for the side street, that signal is going to be green, and the person is going to keep running the way they're doing. Now, you have mentioned something very good, which is enforcement. I think that's one of the things that it has to be applied first, right? It got to be enforcement, so this got to become, I guess, at this point from City of Coral Gables.
But don't forget, Eighth Street divides City Coral Gables and Miami.
I understand.
So there are always going to be a fight, there's most responsibility there. And that is a problem that the state has created, because if this was not the state road.
Yes.
Then we would not have the state's interlocky door, you know, you would be out of the picture. So why don't you just give the street to one of the two streets, so one of two cities? I mean, I'm just proposing that, which is ridiculous. But the fact that we have three jurisdictions on one street creates a lot of problems. What I'm concerned, what my neighbors are concerned, is that the traffic is slowed down. And it's not slowing, it's getting faster, because people want to get home or do their business in a, in a rather faster way, because between four and six o'clock, you know, it's non-stop. What I'm asking on behalf of my neighbors is that the state consider slowing the traffic. Because we are concerned about accidents. People can get killed. We have senior citizens that sometimes want to cross the street from our side to Pego Lamps or from Coral Gables side to Pego Lamps, which is on the other street, on the other side, or to CBS, or to the new properties that are going to come up. Sooner or later, it's going to have to be a light there. Why not do it now, since you're reading this project, and you track between 57th and 49th, a safe box?
So, sir, what we'll do is, we'll take that comment, and we'll pass it to our traffic operations department, and they will evaluate. And I'll make sure that they have your contact information. So when they do obtain that study, that final result, they contact you and to tell you as if it's warranted or if it's not, and the reason why. Okay? Yeah, so they'll, they'll go ahead and do that. Sure. And if you get on the microphone, just make sure that it's on the, okay. Thank you. So yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll pass that information again to our traffic operations department to evaluate. Once again, we'll give an opportunity for those joining us online. If you guys would like to come, and we have five minutes, you can provide your question on the question box, or you can click on the raise your hand button, the virtual raise your hand button, and we will open up the microphones. And as of right now, we don't have anyone virtually. We don't have anyone that wants to speak, nor in the question box, nor in person. So we'll stick around here in person and virtually for another five minutes. And if not, then we will conclude the meeting at 7:30 PM as advertised through the media. So once again, we'll be here until 7:30 PM. If you have any questions, just make sure to alert us, we'll, we'll keep an eye on, to make sure that we get those questions answered for you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Good evening.
Once again, if you're joining us, feel free to submit your question on the question box or raise your virtual hand, and we'll bring you on here to ask questions. I think we do have a question, actually, gentlemen, from Mister Kan Kanjan Dave.
Uh yes, yes, so.
Did I pronounce my name correctly? I want to make sure I have it correctly, Kanjan, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's perfect. So uh all the time I see that on uh near Le Jun. Eh just east of Le Jun, where Auto Nation is, Auto Nation agents, they have office on the north side. And their cars are parked on the south side, and they keep walking and crossing that uh uh road all the time on Eighth Street. Is there a way you can block or put a fence around Auto Nation so they don't cross, because that affects traffic a lot?
You said Auto Nation and where, sorry, what what was the?
The just east of uh Le Jun, near Auto Nation.
East of Le Jun, near Auto Nation, hang on.
Yeah, yeah, uh there is a gas station in front of Auto Nation, and next to ga- gas station, uh there is a car parking. And those agents keep walking across that Le Jun, sorry, eh on Eighth Street as if there is no traffic, and it bothers everyone.
Is that, I mean, that you know, east of Le Jun?
Yeah, that I think that section that he's talking about is outside the limits of the project, because we start right on Forty Avenue. And Auto Nation is right at Le Jun, but I think he's concerned about between the second between Le Jun and Forty.
Right, we don't touch. So what is it that you're having? Maybe we can go ahead and notify the property department.
I think he's worried about jaywalking, because a lot of people do that. I mean, this is Cayocho, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
The jaywalking, it probably, you're going to have to do, I don't know, put a barrier or something in there. Unfortunately. Cayocho cannot accept of any type of barrier or anything like that. Uh it requires a lot of, a lot of uh thing. I I never seen anything like that. Uh but uh, I mean, that that what we're doing, though, uh we will uh we keep adding more and more pedestrian. Signs to to tell them that do not cross and then use the crosswalk. And maybe now that we are introducing the thirty ninth court, which is very close to the area that you're concerned. Probably some people will see an opportunity to actually to use that crosswalk. And when we develop all this mid block crossing, all those uh pedestrian generators we're concerned, we're considering. So maybe let's 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 hope that that this new signal at thirty ninth court may actually alleviate a little bit your concern. Because a lot of people do also go to Navarro and 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 the Sedanos, or what is the, I think it's Sedanos, right? Uh and they and they also, those are the traffic generators in there, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you for joining us. Okay, well, that pretty much includes tonight's public hearing. It is seven thirty one P M. With that being said, uh if you have any follow up questions, um I think we do have one, if you have more question. One second, no, all right, uh wait, let's see. No, we're good. Alrighty, so with that being said, thank you for joining us uh at our virtual public hearing and in person hearing. Uh if you have any information, you can contact me at the number you see on your screen, seventy six five one nine seventy one sixty. You can visit our FDOTMiamiDay.com website for more information on uh projects like these and others. And you can visit the site uh that you see on your screen. As you exit, you will be asked to take an exit, we will, an exit survey, we appreciate if you do. And uh once again, you can obtain tonight's presentation by uh just simply scanning that Q R code. It'll take you right to the project page, but you'll be able to download the presentation. With that said, on behalf of the team, thank you very much for joining us and have a great evening. Thank you.